...meeting, the Town of Easton Planning and Zoning Board, Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. This is gonna be a continuation of our zoning discussion with Judy Barrett. We held off, I mean that we led off with three weeks ago, two weeks ago?
Three weeks ago.
And I just wanna introduce to the town our newest member, alternate member of the board who was appointed last night by the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board, have to get used to that, Amaz Kennel. So, I'll get it right by our third meeting, I promise. Welcome, and we're excited to have you on board, and we've heard lots of stellar reports, so. Judy, I'll let you pick up.
So, you know, the only concern I have is if we don't have the projector here tonight, do we still need to hook up to be able to look at the rest of the PowerPoint? I'm not sure we got through the whole PowerPoint.
Oh.
We did not get to, um, yes, Judy, right?
I can go grab a computer.
Well, meanwhile.
I can, I can go grab that.
Just wanna make sure we're all set here.
I took a quick look at it.
Yep.
Well, we could sing for a little while if we want, entertain the folks.
Well, I just wanna make sure.
Are they able to help us out? ECAT folks?
No. They're not tied into the?
Gotcha.
Technology is just wonderful sometimes.
It's a double edged sword, isn't it?
Yes. I'm not sure why this wasn't opening, and I realize it's because I'm not connected to supply.
So, ECAT, you guys wanna pause this for a little bit? We're having technical difficulty, until we wait for the projector.
I can scroll through if you wanna...
You can scroll through it. So, this was just a land, this was what the existing land uses were.
Right, we talked about this.
And we talked about that, and we showed some example, kind of examples of the different types of forms that are in that district. And then, you know, I went through some of the use regulations, and asked, like, why some things are the way they are, like, so for example, single family homes are allowed, is that really what you want? There's pros and cons. People would like to have, depending on the market, some people wanna have single family homes, but it can also be a use that's adverse to commercial or higher density residential uses, because people don't, people in single family homes have a different market.
And I think we talked there, I mean, we're kinda focusing from Boquonicat, right? So, east to Bay Road for this area?
Yeah, but, you know, I just written down, I wonder, I thought this last time, and then subsequent, or in relation to a meeting you and I had with the property owner, wondering if we should consider the district to pick up all the commercial parcels, or some that are...
North of...
West of Highland Plaza. Would that be west?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Highland Plaza.
On the Mansfield side of Highland Plaza. Is that, is that part of the...
Oh, like Target?
Is that part of the sewer district?
Five of the properties west are included in the sewer district, so, and most of those...
On both sides of the road, or one side?
On the northern side.
So, on the Target side?
Yes.
So, I mean, maybe we should pick up those parcels.
And you're right, we did talk about that.
Okay. So, I need to modify that map then of what the proposed district is.
Yeah.
Could you be able to just tell me what the parcel numbers are, or something, Stephanie?
I can, I can.
Email me, and then we can just modify the shake file on our end?
Right, and I'll, if I haven't already, I'll send you the sewer district map and the diff map.
I don't think I have that.
I think I have that with a layer that has all the parcels.
So, the parcels that you're referring to, what, so, how are they zoned now? Are they in the business district?
Industrial.
Industrial, yes. And we would be including them here because there's an interest in trying to redevelop them, or?
Yeah, well, yeah, my thought is, if they're, if they're in the sewer district, maybe we should include them in this. And then, right, there's been...
I see.
We have, um, we had a meeting with some property owners who had, had some ideas, I don't, I don't think we should make them public, but they had some ideas along the lines of what we're talking about, so I thought, you know, maybe we should put it in there, or consider it anyways.
Right, and, and I mean, maybe that's, maybe that becomes another different district, but what's happening is, those parcels are sitting vacant, definitely impacted, some of them are impacted by wetlands, some aren't, and we got affirmation that the cost to build out the sites, industrial sites now, just is exorbitant versus commercial and residential. I mean, that's, that's what I thought we heard at that meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I just look at, you know, this has been honest, talk about the diff, the district, and it's such a small district, and so if, you know, we're not gonna get real stimulus with, you know, someone putting up a, you know, converting a house into three units of whatever. So, if we, you know, we need a little, you know, some, some land consolidation, or, you know, a couple of the parcels, and I thought, hey, those are up there. And, see, especially with their own sewer, it seemed like a property owner would probably look to do maybe more than industrial.
Oh, yeah, I would think so.
And it seemed like we might, might be a prime location to do, you know, mixed use.
Can you refresh my memory, where are you guys at under Chapter 40B? Are you over 10% yet?
We are 9.7. There's a project that, a Lip Avalon extension with the 44 units, that as soon as DHCD issue is, issues their letter of eligibility, and the project starts, that will bring us to the 10% through the census.
Through Census 2020?
Through census.
Okay.
There are other projects in the queue that, so that census number, I think, is projected to increase around 200 units, but there are projects in the queue that if they proceed, will bring us back down, but, but there's a gap that will need to be met.
Okay, all right. So, the reason I'm asking that, if you scroll forward, finally my PDF opens, thank God, if you scroll forward to the multifamily housing one, which is just a couple of, um...
That's all. Did I miss it?
I think, yeah, I think you did. Go back just a little bit, still, because it's still use regulations. I think it is...
There's mixed use.
Yeah, I think it's right before, isn't that multifamily?
Is it industrial? Yes, right there.
So, one of the notes I had on this slide to myself to talk to you guys about was your affordable housing requirements, and what the town's appetite is for, if the town thinks we're over 10%, we don't need to do anything. I mean, every town has a different view of this, but do you want your inclusionary zoning to work? Because if you want it to work, in terms of actually creating some affordable units, we need to look at that as part of the reinvention of this district, because I think what you have right now is not really effective. But, will people understand that perhaps, just as an example, would people understand a density incentive to get affordable units, or would they be likely to say, well, we don't need affordable units because we're already over 10%?
No, I think they understand if you explain it to them.
I don't know what the town's heart is on any of this.
Well, I think...
Do you wanna try to go to 12 or 15%?
Well, I don't know, I think there's a real, there's a real fatigue, I think it's fair to say, in a vocal portion of this town, they're tired of the big multifamily, because they, people look at, because it happens everywhere. You know, we're out in the sticks, we're not, you know, we're not, we're not urban, you know, and so they, they look at it, kind of all the time, you know, they worry about impact to schools and services, and, and just a loss of the rural character of the town, to which those of us involved in planning said, well, you know, the cat's out of the bag, we have to maintain the 10% and we have units that are gonna be dropping off. So, that's why I look at those parcels that we just talked about, is, you know, if, if we needed to do a moderate sized project to, you know, maybe to jump ahead, and so we don't have to always worry about that 10%. But, or at the same time, I, I do think, and this is what we started to do with, with the foundry property, people, you know, a lot of that, people, a lot of people say, well, you know, how about, why can't we do smaller homes? You know, there's a project going up in Foxborough right now, 1,200 square foot units, and, and, and you're like, oh, they need to, I was actually talking to the planner, I'm like, why didn't they spread it out, you know, it's getting, but, but, you know, at least it's a start. So, it would, there's, you know, we've always talked about diversified housing, you know, beat a dead horse, that's why I would say that's the main thing I took out of the, out of the master plan. But, so, I think if you, even right now, we haven't even presented, the applicant hasn't presented the foundry project, so, you know, a lot of people are online, are upset about it, but I think when we can...
That's the contact neighborhoods project.
Yeah, but when, even though it passed overwhelmingly, it passed, I think unanimously in the town. But, when we, you know, when, when the applicant gets in here and applies, then we can really start to discuss to the town why we think, why we zoned it this way, why we think it's good, and the town supported us wholeheartedly last time, so. So, anyway, so, long way about, I mean, I, I think the town's getting tired of the large apartments, but my thought was, you know, when the Avalon expansion came up for the four or five units, yeah, it's right there, it already exists, so, sure, put some more there, because it will, you know, it helps us with our SHI, helps with diversified housing thing. You need your towns to be younger, you know, we are, the demographic is, we're aging out, and, and it already exists up there, and we're talking about walkable neighborhoods. Well, you need, you know, you need residents who are at a walkable distance.
But you're not gonna get a serious investment in mixed use in this location without scale.
Without what?
Scale.
Scale of residence?
Right, right.
And housing.
Scale of the project.
Sure.
Oh.
So, I'm trying to, you know, the appetite is, people don't like big, you just need to know, this is not gonna be an area that's gonna build out with, you know, cute little small projects where you've got a general store on the first floor and a couple of units upstairs. I mean, I, so I'm just, I'm looking for a sense of what is the appetite here, because, you know, last time when we were talking about stuff to do, and it would be nice to have things to do, and young people, well, you want young people in your community that are looking for stuff to do. You're not gonna get that in small projects, it's just not gonna happen.
And recreation, I mean, that's one of the things that we've heard, the iGolf that is down there has, they are drawing a good business, at least the last time I spoke with them.
Yep.
And people are asking for more entertainment.
I bet they are.
Activities, you know, they've asked about movie theaters, they've asked, gee, maybe gaming centers.
They want stuff!
They want places where they can congregate and socialize.
Right.
I think, if I could, I just wanna quickly say, you know, I think Greg's right, that the appetite for these large scale residential properties, I, I think when you ask about, do we want the inclusionary zoning to work, once we're back on with the 10%, any housing that then develops after that, in order to stay at the 10%, you need to be adding to the SHI. Along those lines, though, you know, we, we have a Affordable Housing Trust that's looking to provide a variety of affordable type of options that aren't necessarily subsidized housing, deed restricted. Most of them would be deed restricted, but, you know, that, a variety of housing, as Greg said.
So, you're, to your point, you know, if you look at the district, that's why I wanted to add these in, because not only, I mean, even before someone came in, there's not, if you look at the Five Corners District we're proposing, there aren't, just because of what it is, there's not, or where it is, there's not a lot of large parcels for scale. There's maybe, yeah, there's maybe two or three, you know, if you're through Shaws in there, there's a blood, by adding, by going on the other, on the Mansfield side of Highland Plaza, it, it brings a couple of the parcels into play, but, but for any serious redevelopment, you need, but, you're not gonna, two units is not gonna do it. And if someone said, well, we're, I'd say, well, if we need to work, if we need to create units to stay, to just get ahead of the 10% for the foreseeable future, there's a pretty good location, an area that we're trying to do economic development, an area that already has it, an area that's on the outskirts, you know, on the perimeter of the town, and has decent access to the highway.
I think we're talking about two separate issues, though, because I, I agree with you, Greg, everything that you made sense, everything that you said made, made sense to me. But I think the main issue that Judy is talking about is scale, and I think we're gonna have to make some decisions here, and, I mean, you have kind of the, your finger to the pulse better than anybody, you know, what are we gonna be able to present that's gonna be feasibly accepted? Because I think, you know, you're right, there's only a few properties, but a lot of them are big, and in order to do anything with them, you know, it's...
Talk of big.
We're talking large projects, you know, to get a developer and some financing together for this stuff, you know, to transform a neighborhood like that is, it's gonna require some flexibility.
But I don't think we have that many large parcels, that's why I'm thinking we should add some in, the parcels are pretty small.
No, I, I agree with you.
Oh, okay.
100% on that. I just, we're, I think there's two conversations going on right now.
Yeah, in some ways, I think you're right.
And I agree with you on adding those parcels in 100% for all the reasons you stated. But I, you know, I mean, my preference, if you're asking me, I mean, I have, maybe it's because I'm on the other side of town, but I certainly would have an appetite for larger projects. It's just, you know, dealing with developers every day, all day long, I know what these guys are thinking about, and where the financing is gonna come from. And I think that we've gotta be flexible in order to realistically expect them to invest in transforming that neighborhood.
Right.
That's my concern.
And sort of like what we said...
These questions.
Right, that's what we talked about last, last time, how the traffic, there's already a lot of traffic there. People always say, your, your, traffic's terrible there, but 29,000 cars a day, adding 300 or 400 cars, traffic's already there, people are already doing the, the oddest shortcut between two interstate I've ever seen, but I don't, I don't know how it saves them money. But, but if we can get, if we can get some, you know, more residents will mean more, you know, more amenities or more options, and then they were, they're driving through, we might as well get them to stop and spend some money in Easton.
Mm-hmm.
If not live in Easton. And, so that's why, just like on 138, there's, there are a number of parcels that, you know, with Coria's Plaza, there was a large parcel that something substantial could happen on, and that will ignite eventually, once that's done, and as, as economy cycles, all those smaller parcels that are never gonna have potential for, for scale, but they'll still have value, because they're, you know...
The economy's strong enough that'll compel some assembly of those properties.
Right, right. But, but like down there, just on the river, it's just strictly because they're just so small.
And there's opportunity for some aggregation in the Five Corners District as well.
Yeah, I know there is. And so, you know, this is another one of these kind of big policy questions. If you really wanna encourage some assembly to get more well-planned projects that actually are gonna get built, you may wanna think about ways to use sort of zoning incentives to encourage assembly, without forcing somebody into a state of nonconformity. Like, you know, one of the classic ways to do, to encourage assembly is to change the frontage requirement, or something like that, so that now we've got a bunch of small parcels that have been made nonconforming, but that can, you know, that, that is its own political consequences, and may not be the best way to go. But the other way to think about it is, if you have a sort of alternative development for, for properties that meet a certain size, you can, you can end up sort of encouraging, encouraging some assembly, because the development rights available to a larger project are different. Am I making sense? It's almost like creating an overlay within a base district.
Right.
Yeah, you know, special projects or something, you know, imagine just sort of a...
Well, I think the compact neighborhood overlay district is probably a good example, because I think the developer was only looking at the foundry site, and then with the advent of this...
What is that?
The gigantic, some sort of bug.
Like a...
It's not an Emerald...
Grasshopper?
It is some kind, yeah, but I've not seen it.
Emerald Ash Borer.
Ew!
Jumped up on my back.
One of those mosquitoes.
Developers that would like to take...
No, my concern is just, well, my, my ultimate concern in any of these projects is, whatever it is that you want, the rules ought to be realistic, or you're not gonna get what you want. So, I'm still, my whole thing is like, what do you want? And, and I think that if there's an interest in trying to, to have more housing in order to support economic development in this area, so you have the critical mass, and you have multifamily, you have mixed use buildings, you're gonna, there's gotta be an appetite for scale, because these are not gonna be little projects. That's what I'm trying to say. There could be some interim little projects, but ultimately, if you really want to have better, for planned development in an area, you probably do wanna have larger parcels. And maybe a way to think about that is, how do we encourage that without making anybody who's there already nonconforming? That, I think, was where I was coming.
I find, I mean, you see this all the time, sure, the appetite with the public for a large scale project improves markedly when, you know, when there's linkage, when there's mitigation, when they get something, you know? Because you can say, well, we're getting, hey, this, we're getting, you know, a million dollars towards the schools, we're getting the, the design and engineering of this...
The water changes.
We're getting $600,000, whatever.
What's happening with your school enrollments?
Sidewalk, yeah.
Are they going down, or are they up, or are they about level? Your school enrollments? What happened is happening, are they going down, or are they going up, or are they about level?
They're going down. They're going down. I mean, it's, it's, I don't think they're dropping precipitously.
Yeah.
And I, I think where, I think where your ceiling increases is in the, the early ed, and then, but then it starts to drop off.
Is there a correlation between more of this type of project and more commerce?
More commerce? Well, I think that's what Judy's saying when she's talking about scale, that it's a combination of, if you want the commercial aspect, you need bodies to spend the money. So, you may need, it may, the, the balance may be, if I'm not being presumptuous, more on the housing to support this commercial.
It would have to be.
So, there's two questions for us to be thinking about, I think. The first is, what is our collective appetite for that?
Yes, yes.
And the second is, and, you know, I, I look to YouTube primarily, you know, depending on what our answer is to that question, what can we realistically expect to achieve with, you know, the, the select board?
I think the select board recognizes the need for economic development. I think it might be an easier pitch to them. They have to respond to the public at large, and I think Greg makes a really good point, that you have to demonstrate the benefit to the town at large, I, I think the mitigation. So, again, you're, you're, with density comes impacts, and infrastructure needs. How much of that can, are you able to offset with mitigation payments? The other is focusing, and you can correct me, Greg, if I'm wrong, that you, this isn't, we're not looking at this type of development throughout the town, it's concentrated in these areas that have historically developed as more urbanized areas with commercial.
Yeah, you know, I think, why we started all this, we, what we've, we have three, we have three downtown areas really in Easton. We have the Village over here, which is pretty much, I mean, we're working on that also, but that's, that's much more, that's the...
Constraint.
It's much more residential, it's, it's the old village, it is what it is, I don't need to talk about. You know, 138 clearly has seen better days. And what I tell people all the time, when someone, as I'm amazed how many people watch these shows on TV, someone, someone grabs me at Anafford's, or, we don't have Anafford's anymore, but it's shop.
Big Y.
At the Villa, wherever. And, you know, well, you just wanna pave everything, you wanna, I'm like, no, no, no. I said, but the, the traffic's already here. If we add one or two or 300, you know, residences over the next 10 years, first of all, that's, historically, that's a very slow compared to what we've done. We've already preserved most of our open space, so now we're looking sort of at infill, so let's, these roads are already being traveled on.
And they're able to reuse.
Right.
It's where you are.
So, I mean, and retail, and business, as we know, is changing, right now, I mean, it's been changing for a couple decades, who knows where it's coming out, right? So, look at, look at all the old, you know, the underutilized and sort of neglected or just forgotten properties on Route 138, and, and a lot of vacancies on 1, 106, 123 in this district. So, what, what I'd like to see are, what is a neighborhood? Well, there's a mixture of residences, not, not just giant apartments, a little bit of everything, you know, but in some places, yeah, some larger apartments, because you need, first of all, there's the need for that, we are a college town, this, our children's generation does not buy houses right now, they rent. And the rent is high enough in Easton, that even though they can still be affordable, it's still really high, so we're, we're gonna be able to maintain, you know, people get worried about maintaining a level of service in town, we won't be able to maintain that. But we need to have enough people there, and have some young folks, so we can innovate and create and be imaginative, and, and who knows what these spaces are gonna end up being, but they're gonna come up being something. And it's coming this way. Washington, as we know, is on fire, and it's already, Canton's already filled up, Spilton's filled up, you know, it's here. So, and we're so, I say this all the time, we're so lucky that 123 and 106 are sort of on our extremities, so we can sort of rehab them, repurpose them, you know, rezone them, and, and we've already seen the results. We did this two or three years ago with Judy, and what's gonna happen down at Coria's Plaza. You know, 138, 10 years from now will look completely different. And what I'd like to see it look like, why were we all attracted to town? You know, you talked about the schools before, a lot, if, if, a lot of people you ask, it's the parks, it's the, it's the architecture, a lot of stuff that was left behind the ancients, it's stonehill. That what's, that's what sets us apart from our neighbors. Well, we try to continue that, that's why so often we work through special permits, so that we can, we can try to require at, at least a level of an aesthetic that is comparable to what we have in town. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to see these areas just be, like, we were talking about the internally illuminated sign last week, I don't wanna just see miles of, you know, cheap signs and cheap looking construction. I wanna see, you know, neighborhoods with character and detail and interest, because that's what people, that's where commerce happens, and that's where people like to live.
And homogeneity...
Yeah.
Can kill.
It sure can.
Can kill a neighborhood and the best of projects when...
Right.
I mean, there's a couple of examples of buildings in town, obviously won't say them, but that are just simple boxes, and they're not that old, but they're never occupied, because, and I think if you're, you know, if you're looking to set up, hang out your shingle somewhere, you know, you know, you know, you want, you want something that, that represents your business, or something that, you know, so, so that's why, that's why we work with special permits, work great, because then the town, when people say, you know what, it's better, what's, you know, creating affordable housing through, through inclusionary zoning allows us to do it as a special permit, so the town does get to have a say. I, that's the one thing I don't like about 40Bs, is kind of a really blunt planning tool, and people that have, I, I like when townspeople and appointed folks that volunteer a lot of time and have a passion, can have an input. So, by doing it through a special permit, we're able to interact with the town and have lots of conversation, people come in, and, and we've seen great results with that. So, anyways, the point is, so we're trying to create three walkable neighborhoods, and, yeah, that's, we're gonna need some, some scale, certainly in this district.
You mentioned dealing with developers to get that character, he's a fantastic developer. How do you do that?
Incentives. They, they need, they need to know...
Collaboration to make the process easier for them, right?
Yeah, they need to know that the infrastructure's there for them, they need to know that they want a predictable permitting process, they want, they want it...
They want to know what you want, and what you want needs to make sense.
And what you're going to, that's right.
And, and if all of those things are true, it is, it never ceases to amaze me how willing developers generally are, at least in my experience, to sort of give a bit when the rules make sense, and when they can make some money. No developer wants to tick off the town, no, no decent developer wants to build crap, they really don't. But, but we create these permitting systems that don't make sense, that really just drag people through the mud, and then we wonder why, and the rules don't make sense, the development rules don't make sense, and then we wonder why we get crap. At some point, we have to sort of ask ourselves, to what extent are we, as the municipality, the planning profession and so forth, encouraging this? Because everybody's so afraid.
Yeah. And I, when you say, they, I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't throw it.
No, they, they need to know what you want.
They really do.
They, that's so important, and, and what you don't want.
Yeah. But I think, and I agree with that, I think that what you want needs to be at least as clear as what you don't want.
Yes.
One of my great frustrations with zoning is that it's written in the, thou shalt not, you know, it's all written in the negative, and so you're left as a developer with, well, what the heck do these people actually want? I know what you don't want, which is anything, but, but what do you want? And the zoning needs to be clear about that.
So, I think scale is something that is gonna be easy, and something for us to, when we decide on whatever that is, to be able to draft, so there's predictability. But I think what I'm hearing, and this makes sense to me, and this board has done a great job of that with Coria's Plaza, is when it comes to the aesthetic, there's gotta be some room for us to work with these developers, and so that we can kind of keep that character that Greg has been talking about.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's, that's why we do it as a special permit. And quite, what we've done really well, the last, you know, three, four, five years, first with, with Gary Anderson, and then with Stephanie, is we, you know, we will... years, first with, with Gary Anderson and then with Stephanie, is we, you know, we will meet, we do lots of meetings, you know, if someone comes in, wants about property, and we'll tell them, hey, yeah, this is what we're looking for, and we explain the process, and we don't say yay or nay to things, because we don't take away the power of the board, but we, we sort of grease the skins.
Right.
So that when they come in, you know, I remember years ago, there was a, some residential development came into the, came in, it wasn't even that large, came in, had never, hadn't talked to anybody in the town, had a set of plans, this, that, had environmental impact reports, which we hadn't required in, I think, a decade, you know, and, um, and, and, but yet it didn't, it didn't meet the bottom, it wasn't even close, they were like, what are you doing? And it ended up being like a year and a half process, because it was just, you know, if you work ahead of time, it's like anything, right? The only, you'll get, and get, you know, we try to point them in a direction, lay out, hey, yeah, we like this, we like that, we don't like this, we don't like that. And they like, because the, the unknown's taken away, right? That's all, so, because developer, it's like any business, they're just thinking time and material, right? So they want to, they want to know what.
So, sorry, go for it.
So can you write a specification ahead of that?
What kind of specification?
Generic, about, you say, would you, would you want this, 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 eternal town, we don't get any due.
Well, we, we sort of do, we have, like, design standards. We like design standards?
Yeah, like how do we suggest what you're saying?
Design standards.
Where you go and have these meetings.
Design guidelines, right.
Put that into our.
Yeah.
The Queeset Commercial District has design guidelines, um, I don't, does Village Business District?
Uh.
I can't remember.
It's a small one, but that was one of the things we're going to add on, but yeah, we're sort of designing, because what we don't want to say is, okay, we want brick and this and that, but you know, there's things like, you know, traditional New England materials and yada, yada, yada.
You give them some leeway, but a general direction.
And the first thing engineers will ask you is specification, you mean, you mean what you want?
Right.
So I don't work for nothing, um, and I go on the run duration, that's.
Well, that's sort of what, I mean, zoning is sort of a specification, you know, along with, and then, but the reason we do a special permit, say if you just have by right zoning, then they can just kind of put, you know, special.
Well, not necessarily, Greg, I don't agree with that. You could have by right that says, you can do this as a right if you meet the following requirements.
Right, right.
So they don't just get to do what they want, they get it by right if they meet certain requirements, and if they don't meet those requirements, they can come and request relief from some of them by special permit. So I wouldn't be categorically averse to, to something as a right that makes economic sense, because you can condition the use without the special permit, the conditions of the use end up being part of the zoning. Am I making sense?
Yes.
That's where my mind was with this.
Thank you.
Because my concern with doing everything by special permit.
Yeah.
Is that you're not going to get the type of developers that are really, you know, going to come out and say, hey, I know what I can do here, I'm going to sink the time to.
I agree.
Piece these parcels together or to, you know, go buy the Shaw's Plaza and really transform that area, you know, when they don't know what the financial situation's going to be a year and a half from now when they have to work through the special permit process. I think that you, we.
I agree.
Well, this is more of a question than a statement, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can meld the two ideas. I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not saying this is definitive, but it just seems to me that, that there's got to be some predictability.
Yes.
Was the word, in order to get the type of developers that are really going to invest in the area.
Afraid.
While also giving us some flexibility to maintain the aesthetic that I think we all love about this town, and that you guys have done such a great job, you know, promoting, especially recently with Korea's Plaza. Wow, those are my.
No design guidelines into site plan review.
But I don't think you're, you're, you're too exclusive, you can write something.
Well, they're, they are different. As a right is.
You meet all the requi, right, right.
You meet all these requirements, you're going to get, you're going to get site plan, you're going to get a building permit, I mean, that's what as a right means.
It's up to the board to determine if they're meeting the requirements, they need to be able to.
Permit is a more flexible system, it's also less predictable for the developer, but, you know, if the incentives make sense, some developers will say, I'll swallow the special permit because I'm going to get X, but then this gets back to the question of scale, I mean, you know.
And it, and it hasn't happened.
Well, and I think it's important to remember, and I can speak from experience, so now we have, now let's boil it down to, so we're talking about Easton, and we're talking about the developers that Easton has worked with, some are residents in town, most of them are, but our experience, and I've been on both sides of the table with this, so I go back thirty, thirty-five years, so thirty-one years with this, um, and I think one of the reasons that we've drifted to, you know, the, the districts that we've worked on, they're small and any scale, it, it's still limited, just because it's, it's a finite amount of land, it is what it is, but, um, or a finite amount of sewer. We've had, I, I think it's fair to say, we've had a high percentage of development that, you know, yeah, you can, you know, you can set up some standards and some guidelines, but there's still, you know, there's, there's always ambiguity with that, because you can only go so far. And we have seemed to specialize in folks that do try to get, you know, go for the minimum. Uh, we've had a.
I think your zoning asks for that, to be honest with you.
Yeah, maybe that's, yeah, but, but then it's a chicken, chicken or the egg, I think, I think some of that zoning has been that way because of, you know, it's a little bit of both, but.
You've been getting the bare bones, you mean?
Like, we, like, Easton hasn't shunned away a lot of the large-scale developments, developers, when they've come in recently that they've been, that worked with and for the most part it's been successful. It's sort of that mid, mid, mid-level, that mid-sized project, which is the majority of projects in Easton. Some are fine or some are, you know, some have been pretty, um, bare bones, and that's why we found it, and we've had, we've had really good success. I mean, tell me anybody who was scared away by, in the last five years by special permit, I think people have, have, I think they, developers have appreciated it and, and it's been successful. Because again, we're just not talking.
Well, it might be because the special permits have been pretty prescriptive, which again, I think is helpful in the process if you're laying out what you're looking for, like the flexible development and, and even the compact neighborhood overlay district.
How much revenue are you, are you trying to raise out of development in this district?
Haven't done those numbers.
I'm not suggesting you should ever zone for dismal reasons or for a diff bond, but I think you might want to be thinking about, what are you trying to get to?
We know what, we know what we're trying to get to with the diff.
There's, there's got to be a, you know, there's a diff here, so we need to be thinking about that.
So based on, based on current zoning, um, the projection and, um, the availability of sewer.
Yeah.
And market analysis, the diff program identified seven million dollars in new growth tax revenue.
Okay. Under existing zoning?
And I think that was, I think that was maybe.
Was that fifty percent of fourteen?
No, that, uh, I'm sorry, you're right, it was fourteen million dollars in total over a thirty-five-year period. And that was a very conservative, again, based on current zoning, what would be allowed, it included the compact neighborhood overlay district, it included a project like Avalon, um, which is a 40B, but, um, we really took a conservative approach.
Sure.
So that, you know, whatever we committed to, um, using to lower that betterment, we could have a reasonable, the town could have a reasonable expectation, a high reasonable ability of expectation that it would be generated. So, to answer your question, I mean, and this is just knee-jerk, probably double that is what you ideally like the.
That's in the middle forecasted this development too?
I'm sorry?
That's in the middle forecasted this possible development as well? That's in the middle.
It was based on current zoning.
It was based on current zoning.
Without the.
Right, right. I mean, while we were doing the analysis, we knew new zoning would be contemplated, we didn't know what that would look like and didn't want to project what that might be.
From someone who doesn't know what seven million is in the scale to other towns, do we need, like, have any comparisons, is that like high, low, like?
Well, it's fourteen million.
Right.
Because, so we should, you know, um, and.
That's thirty-five years from now, is it?
Yeah.
Over a period of thirty-five years.
So cumulative.
Cumulative.
I mean, and look, I, I don't, just to circle back, uh, you know, whether it's by right or a special permit, and, and we don't need to get caught in the weeds now, if, if it's going to be the former, that's fine, I just, we need to write it in a way to, to make sure they understand what we want and so that we can get.
That's right.
Judy, I have a question for you, which maybe, you know, maybe the unspoken question Greg's got in the back of his mind. When you have something by right, even where you've really prescribed it, what's the opportunity for asking for mitigation payments?
Asking for?
Mitigation.
Uh, it's harder, because if you meet all the requirements.
Right.
The town really isn't in a position to do and ask.
Right. So I think that's, that's kind of.
Well, but you can.
Why the.
Right, I was going to say, I mean, you can't.
Not through zoning, you got to be careful.
Not through zoning, yeah, it's very, yeah, it's.
Careful that they're not using zoning to, to do what zoning.
I want to call it, it's, um, not impact fees, what do they call it when it's, um, not linkage?
Don't they do like, don't they have a credit system that they do with the Cape Cod Commission?
Cape Cod Commission operates under legislative authority that's different from what you've been asked.
So that's, so they've got a whole different set of rules.
Whole separate, yes, that RPA.
Oh, interesting.
Operating under a special act and has authority that no other RPA does.
Yeah.
So you're, you're right to be asking that question.
It's not a demand fee, there's a, a word.
Well, linkage or impact fee, but the Cape Cod.
But I mean, the negative side of that is, I mean, you can, there can be impact fees if you can demonstrate a clear impact and, but.
It hasn't, it hasn't worked yet in Massachusetts, except for the Cape and Medford, which happens in Boston, of course, and Medford and Boston both have special legislation they operate under that's different from everybody else. So, you know, I would be reluctant, I'm very reluctant to suggest that you try to write this based on impact fees, because I don't think you're going to.
Well, the town council wouldn't.
Town council, I'm sure they wouldn't, right, because no one's encouraging anybody to do that, but that is an issue, you're absolutely right. Um, if someone meets all the requirements, then you really can't ask them for money. That's, but, you know, I'm going to be honest with you, you shouldn't be through the special permit process either, it's not what it's intended for. So there's my elephant in the room. A special permit is, is not about getting mitigation money.
Oh, well, but I, I didn't say that.
Okay.
And I don't think, she's, no, no, I mean, you know why I like special permit? Because it's carrot and steak. Yeah, it's more, it's more, it's aesthetic more than anything. We have been underserved by developers of this town for years and, you know, other, even neighboring towns have had much better, you know, to me, aesthetic is what made Easton and that's what I pushed for. Um, and, you know, when, otherwise if we don't, our duplexes are just double cheapo houses slammed against random, you know, and, and our strip malls are just strip malls, so we've seen those instances.
Some of this is market too, though, I mean, their market plays a factor in all this. But I, you know, I don't know where you go with all that, I just would say, you know, the, the developers, the development community that's doing kind of really high-end investment does not want to be at risk, any more than they already are. They're already at market risk, they don't want to be at regulatory risk as well. So it's something to think about. That said, there's nothing wrong with thinking about zoning that grants a fair amount of privilege, but also provides for things like a master plan special permit for a larger project, you know, and I don't know if you're familiar with that kind of zoning, but the master plan special permit is essentially where someone can come in at a master plan level for a large project. So they're not doing the level of detail submission that they would for a site plan review. You're master planning a site, you're planning to build it out over seven to ten years. So you have a master plan special permit, and now as you're doing each building in the project or something, you're coming in for a site plan review, you're, basically the special permit is locked in the zoning.
Well, it's very similar, that's similar to the project that was taken on the com, on, on the Queeset Commons, the 40R.
Yeah.
And, and I believe it was Greg who suggested they do it that way, that they approve it at the master plan level, um, and then come back for each of the stages.
Right, and that's been done, and that's been done fairly successfully, but again, to get someone to do that, you need to be giving a fair amount of, you know, raison d'etre for somebody to make that kind of investment. But it works, I mean, all of the Western Nurseries redevelopment in Hopkinton was done, has been done on a, a master plan special permit, um, so there's precedent for this. And, you know, there's other things too, like, let's say you had, you know, a five corners district, and part of the five corners district might include a sub-district, and the sub-district could be a planned development district, and you have a planned development option where someone can propose to, um, to place their zoning in the planned development district of five corners. So it's almost like this overlay that rides over the whole district, but it doesn't actually trigger until someone submits a proposal to say, I want to be five corners planned development one.
And they would come in with their own?
They would basically come in with a request to zone their property under the provisions of the planned development district of five corners.
So that sounds like it's, um, it would be beneficial to the town, because you could work with them and tell them what you want and don't want, however, they're coming in taking a risk that you're going to generally like what they are proposing and able to do.
It needs to be clear what you want, it needs to be clear, it needs to make sense.
Kind of what you're, what you're intent, which is, brings me to another, I mean, I really think like a preamble to the, any of this zoning change really needs to be, what's the intention?
Right.
Of the zoning, um, I, I think it makes it clearer to the developers.
Right.
It also makes it clearer to the board and anyone interpreting the zoning.
Yeah, because you know, you actually don't have purpose statements for your district too.
They're in, um, I think we did for the.
We did for.
Compact Neighborhood Overlay District and Queeset, there is, uh, yes. I, I checked that out, Judy.
So we should think about that.
Yes.
Because, you know, something like the sort of planned development overlay might get at some of this concern about mitigation.
Yep.
Um, but it also kind of locks in for somebody who might be thinking of sort of a longer-term project, the zoning gets locked in with the special permit. Um, but it does create that negotiation piece that I think Greg might be concerned about, so it's just a device.
So you'd kind of, you'd set some standards.
And a procedure for, for using your district.
It, but it also gives, I'm, I'm just making sure that I understand it, but it also gives the developer an option to come in and, and really kind of propose, which again, is how this 40R district was proposed.
Right. Lincoln has used this kind of zoning quite successfully. Their procedures for doing so would never work in Easton, but the concept has been used. Yep, and I'll give you, let me give you an example. So you have a North Lincoln planned development district, so it's all of North Lincoln, North Lincoln, and any, if someone wants to do something other than gigantic single-family homes on two acre lots, they can come to the planning board and say, I want to propose North, North Lincoln PD1, for lack of a better name. And in North Lincoln PD1, I want to do, um, you know, an, an age-restricted compound that includes assisted living, you know, elderly apartments, whatever. So I submit a plan and I have the basic zoning written out for PD1 that goes to town meeting. Town meeting is essentially approving the creation of a new sub-district, and once that's done, then the zoning that was presented to town meeting for PD1 becomes the zoning for that land. Am I making sense? So it's just an option, I mean, it is a bit convoluted and it could not necessarily interest a smaller-scale developer, but it might be interesting to one, a larger one. That is thinking about a larger, a longer-term project.
It's very, it's very reminiscent of how that, the 40R district came into being.
Yeah.
And also, although it did fail at town meeting, there was, uh, uh, they tried to pass a cottage overlay district, the developer came in with a concept, with an idea, some plans, and said, I wanna do this, and here's where, yeah, you have to go.
You're leaving?
I do.
Yeah, he said he had to leave.
I have a hard stop at seven thirty, I'm sorry. My wife is out of town this week, so.
I understand these things, I've been there, yes.
Thanks.
Bye.
And, and that, that was the next step, it, it was going to get an overlay district or a district passed that would allow this cottage development to proceed.
Right, so I guess what I'm trying to say to you is, there's tools out there to get at, I think, some of these concerns, but, you know, ultimately, you're asking developers to take a risk, and a town's gonna take some risk too, and there's no real way around that, there's always gonna be some risk here, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that you ignore that, I'm just saying it's part of, it's part of kind of the whole conversation that happens when you're trying to get people to invest in your town, and everybody's trying to figure out how to not have any more risk, you know, than, than necessary.
So, a, a couple of things, I'm gonna do some housekeeping items, originally, when Greg and I started talking about this, we were hoping to get to fall town meeting with some zoning changes, the fall town meeting is scheduled for November twelfth, the date for warrant articles is September twelfth, in the past, we have been able to put some placeholders in, I don't, this is kind of a reality check, it's not, it's not, so I, I just wanna, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure we know that, and everyone agrees.
Because this is complicated stuff.
It is complicated.
It's fun, it's fun to do this, but.
So, that being said, and at seven thirty, Greg, do you wanna continue some more of the discussion without, um, Robert?
I feel like I have, I'm out of star, I'm outwinding.
And kind, kind of come back with some ideas.
So I just wanted to circle back, 'cause we, where we got going, so.
Yeah.
In part because of the town, town council, you know, Mr. Tallman, who I know you're familiar with.
Oh, yes.
He's a big fan of, he, he's the one who actually turned me on to the special permit a few years ago.
Oh, yeah, Jake and I will lock heads, I'm sure.
And even when we all worked together on, on Queeset, I mean, district.
Which was Mark, really.
Um, but, but see, that's what I love about working with you, 'cause you're, you're cutting edge, you have all these ideas, so forgive my, my crew, but what you were just talking, so in theory, you know, what you were just talking about, and what, right, so reminiscent of, of the original Queeset.
Yeah.
The, the forty R, and, and that's something, because we, we had a development team there, it was two things, you, to make that work, you need, you need administration that has the bandwidth and the desire, and, and the same with the developer, and we had that in that case, and we were, you know, so, I guess, would that work, that, okay, this district could have this sort of as an overlay, but then we would, we would have, we'd also have smaller zoning, zoning in place for smaller parcels where.
I think you're gonna want to think about that, I'm not sure, you know, I don't think we ought to make small properties that are there now, non-conforming, if we can avoid it.
I'm sorry, ma-
I don't think, I think we wanna avoid making people non-conforming if we can.
Yes, and I think especially, and we talked about this, the residences
Yes.
along that strip, and some of, I mean, people like their homes, they like where they're, they're living, a lot of them are stor- historical in that they're older and they have character.
I don't think we wanna hurt anybody, so.
I mean, I, I think the opposite, I almost wondered, down at the core, there's almost a couple of properties, and I know some of the property owners have expressed interest in this, I almost wonder if we go to smaller zoning, smaller parcels, in, so that some, some parcels, you know, they're.
Or is that part of the allowance, if someone comes to you with a project, if they can aggregate some of these parcels, like?
There's an existing property there.
Also use sub-districts if we need to.
There's a parcel, there's a property owner there, very close to the, to the intersection of, of Five Corners, and it is, it's a developed land, developed parcel, but with sewer coming online, you don't need large septic systems anymore.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And he's, these people have said, hey, do you think, any chance we could carve out a parcel here or there?
Yep.
Went in, you know, and so, something, I mean, we wanna be careful, we don't wanna tap this whole thing out, but, so, I mean, I, yeah, I could see where we could actually go to, historically, this town had smaller parcels.
I know you do.
We're gonna have these walkable neighborhoods, that's, that's where it gets back.
Those are some of the sweetest parts of this town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Small lot parks where people can walk.
You know, when Greg talked about the, the village area being mostly residences, that's what, in large part, I think, helping to make the businesses, the new businesses and new business growth successful. People are walking, they, they love it, even if they're driving, you know, it, they're still within proximity, it's, and people who are coming from outside the district like the character.
Sure they do, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you want me to maybe start?
I would walk to there all the way from Black Brook.
You could, you could.
If you go Sander's.
I would bicycle, I would, I would bicycle, but.
Yeah, there are a lot, there's a ton of people that bike in this town, it's crazy.
Oh, yeah.
Like, Saturday morning, there'll be fifty or so that go by the house.
Yeah.
We need to figure out how to get them to stop, and, and give them more places to stop along the way.
Right.
And make it a destination for people who do, because there are lots of little bicycle clubs and groups that will, you know, it's a cafe ride.
Right.
Right.
I had an open studio once, and I had a group of fifty bicycle guys stopped, and.
Did you?
Yeah, it was hilarious.
Love it.
Couple of them jumped on the lathe, I was like. Got their little click-in shoes, I'm like, this is.
I can say, I can say this because I'm a cyclist, but it sounds like an invasion of locusts.
Yeah, it was, it was cool, we had, we had a friend play some music, so, well, thank you.
Not a problem, it's always very interesting.
For coming in, and you.
All right, so, um, just because I like to know kind of where we're at, what's kind of the next, you're gonna start working and drafting?
I need to try to outdo some.
And then you and I will kind of talk about what the next deliverable is, and, okay.
Well, I think that is the next, the first five steps were culminated in this sort of outline space for.
Right, right, but kind of the timeframe for that.
Yes.
And, and now that we're not trying to, and I, I, Greg and I had already talked about this, but I just wanted to make sure that, if we weren't gonna try to get to town meeting, that everybody agreed. Yeah.
It's always interesting, you know, late spring, so many towns have an interest in trying to get some zoning to a town meeting in the fall, and then the reality of summer break, and people not being available, I mean, all these things sort of start to just affect these schedules, and.
Well, you haven't usually done that, only smaller zoning things at fall meeting.
Yeah, no, at first it was just a thought, but, you know, once you get into, so we're, this is the fun part, you know, we're, we sat here, right, we had, we had a couple of jam sessions, we send you off now, and you would come back, you worked your magic, and, and, yeah, under the gun, you know, you know, we get so, I mean, it's just not realistic, middle of September's here before you know it, and that's never, you know, we need to, it's like a fine wine, right, we need to let this breathe and tweak it, and.
Absolutely.
True. Because, and we've mostly talked about, about Five Corners.
You still haven't talked about the Village Business District.
Obviously, that's a lot easier.
That's all right, we can talk about the Village at the next meeting, I mean, if you wanted to focus on the Village Business District next.
Well, I think this is the, I think the Five Corners is the harder part anyway, it's a much bigger district, and, again, the opportunities there are very different, even though.
It's never defined character yet.
Yes, yeah.
It's scratchy.
Yes, yes.
I have a question from a viewer at home.
Yeah.
That was very long.
Well, at some point.
Not a viewer at home, that's too long.
At some point, the, there, I'm, I'm just mentioning this to the board, because,